Okay, I see it's seven o'clock. Just before we get started tonight, I just wanted to thank everyone for joining us. And I wanted to acknowledge that we're likely heading into an even more challenging period as we go. COVID cases are rising across the country and in our state, and we see many school districts throughout the state going remote, and many more who have been remote since March. A great deal has been said so far about how hard our teachers are working, and what a great job they're doing, and they are. They have had to reinvent the way they deliver instruction while balancing the needs of their own families. A great deal has also been said about how hard our administrators are working, and they are too. They've been working without respite since March to support our teachers and students, and to navigate great uncertainty. But I also wanted to acknowledge how challenging this is for our students and families. Everyone is having to do things in new ways. Students and parents have lost much of the structure and social connections that they've always relied on. Parents are required to be more involved in their children's education than they ever were, and the unknown and uncertainty is extremely frustrating. We hear that loud and clear, and are committed to continuous improvement as a district. We've been very open about the many challenges we are facing and the things we can't do. But here's what we can and will do. We will stay focused on the needs of our students, and we'll support the people who support our students. We will continue to ask ourselves how we can improve, what resources we need to improve, and how we can get those resources. We will continue to negotiate in good faith and to partner with our teachers' union, because we cannot educate our students without them. We will listen to our community, and we will be guided by science. Finally, we will communicate the district's challenges and successes to the very best of our ability. We don't always have the answers, but we will share the information we do have when we have it. These last nine months have been extremely challenging for everyone, and this is likely to continue. To make it through, we're asking you to please continue to support each other. Assume best intentions, because everyone is struggling right now. We're committed to doing everything we can for our students and our schools, and we will be stronger if we can work together as a community. So that being said, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:02. And I'm going to read this. "The meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during the meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I can inform the other participants of said recording. I know Harbor Media will be recording tonight. If anyone else is planning to record this meeting, could you please click on the Participants at the bottom of the screen, and then use the Raise Hand function to let us know?" I'll just give it a minute. Okay, seeing none. I'm just going to, before we get onto Item 2, the approval of minutes, I'm just going to ask the members of the School Committee to introduce themselves for the member of the public. So Michelle, we'll go alphabetically. Michelle?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michelle Eyre. Nice to see you. Thanks for being here.
Jen?
Hello, I'm Jen Benham. Nice to see everyone.
Ness?
Hi, Ness Corente. Nice to see everyone.
Carlos?
Hello, this is Silva. Good evening.
And Libby?
Hi, everybody. I'm Libby. Thank you for coming.
And Liza?
Hi, Liza O'Reilly.
And I'm Carrie Ne. Okay, so number 2.1 is the approval of the minutes of the School Committee meeting held on November 2, 2020. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 2, 2020 regular meeting.
Thank you, Carlos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an "aye" as well. Item 2.2, Minutes of the School Committee Meeting Held on November 6, 2020. This was the first coffee. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Coffee with the Superintendent meeting held on November 6, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Michelle. And we'll go roll call again. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an "aye" as well. So the minutes are approved. Section 3, Questions and Comments. So the Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed in the meeting. In addition, we've set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the School Committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please click on the Participants button at the bottom, and then use the Raised Hand function. When you're recognized by the Chair, please state your name and address, and address your comments to the Chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the School Committee. As established by Mass. General Law, the responsibilities of the School Committee are to: 1. Select and evaluate the Superintendent; 2. Review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and 3. Establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the School Committee. The School Committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, if anyone has here and has a comment that's not on the agenda, could you, again, click on Participants and then the Raise Hand function at the bottom right-hand side of the screen? And I'll just give it a minute. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So number 4 is the Superintendent's Report. So Dr. Austin?
For people who start yelling at me that I'm muted, I took myself off mute. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. And Chairperson Ne, thank you very much for that statement at the beginning of the meeting tonight, and I echo your sentiment that this community should be very proud of all of its members, from its teachers to its students to its families, who have really coming together. And although that these are difficult days, and as you mentioned, we expect that difficult days will still be ahead of us for a little bit more time, we should be very proud of all of our efforts. So thank you to our families, thank you to our students, to our teachers, to all of our administrators, all of our support personnel, and to all of you as School Committee members as well for the hard work you do in supporting our district. Oh, thank you, before we... Thank you for all that you do. Tonight I have a brief PowerPoint, just to highlight a couple of things I always do, with two brief updates on, one on the COVID metrics, and two just where we are in the our plans of looking at Phase 3 of reopening. So Julie, if you'd open that up for me. Thank you. So we'll start, as you've seen now, the... This is our metrics report, and the top is the how many cases per 100,000. As you will see, the cases per 100,000, actually, for the last two weeks have been down. Last week was 7.7, this last week with 9.2, just a slight uptick. And as with the new metrics that was introduced two weeks ago by the Governor, the town of Hingham is still in the green, which means that we have less than 10 cases, and that our test positive rate, what you see on the bottom, is still fairly low at 1.52%. We thank everyone for their efforts. We are reminded constantly how important this is right now, and particularly now to stay true to the COVID metrics, I mean, COVID activities to mitigate the spread of the disease, and avoiding large gatherings, wearing your mask, washing your hands, et cetera. So please continue to do that, and hopefully that we can keep Hingham in the green. It's also important, in the green, we've been able to remain open in our schools, and I'm very proud of that, that the work that we're doing with our six-foot spacing right now is working very well. We continue to have low spread of, or actually no transmission in the school that we're aware of. Again, there's no 100% guarantee that there has been never any spread of any COVID in our schools. However, we've not had any contact tracing to identify that students have received or staff have received COVID by being in our school system. So we want to go back now on the top chart here. The last few weeks have really seen us level off in regards to cases. So since the, this last week, we've had a total, this is the total cumulative cases that we've had, of 23, which is a two additional cases over the week before, and three over the week before that. So you can see, if you were looking at from 1018 or 1024 to now, we've had only four cases total over those four-week period. So the, again, our spacing, our, the things that we're doing in school to mitigate the spread is doing very, very well, and I appreciate all the efforts of our support staff, our custodial staff, our maintenance crews, our facilities, et cetera, for keeping our buildings clean, for our students to follow to the best of their ability, all of our COVID mitigation strategies, as well as our teachers, who are watching very carefully. On the bottom, we see the positive test cases, and again, the last two weeks it seemed one, and then last week we had two. The other good news is the weekly quarantine report. So as much as we're hearing across the country where things are increasing, the last five weeks have seen us reduce the number of people who are in quarantine from in, on the week of October 11, 2017, we had over 120 people in quarantine, to now just a few over 10 that are in quarantine as of right now. This is something we're going to watch very carefully, and I would also caution all of us to think that this is completely under control in Hingham, because I think we all know that that's simply not the case, and we have to be incredibly vigilant, because all around us, things are increasing, and so we need to be very careful and be very cautious wherever we go. And an update quickly on the reopening of Phase 3 that we've talked about before. I don't have a lot of new information, but I want to tell you about some positive things that we've done. Many of you have asked about a transportation survey, because we've talked about transportation and who would need that. However, since that time, John Ferris, our Director of Facilities and Business and Support Services, has obtained five additional buses that we've procured for our use for this year into the future. And so that's very good news for us to be able to transport when we do move to more students coming in on a daily basis. We'll be able to transport them, we'll be able to transport more students, which is good news. I would say a caution note, we still need to hire and train those drivers, because that takes a certain amount of time to be able to do. Anywhere between 30 to 60 days, I believe, is the amount of time it takes to train drivers to get their certifications and license. So while it's good news we have the buses, we are still working on the drivers and hiring and training. So thank you to John Ferris for that work. In regards to space, we are continuing in our active negotiations for St. Jerome's property. I do hope to have details very, very soon and solidified, since we are working with them very closely. So we are still pursuing, and that's what our hope is. And then, as we think about our space at St. Jerome's, we are planning for required staff at St. Jerome's property, which is going to include custodial services, office support, building oversight staff, so who's going to be the management there, as well as nursing services, teachers and support staff as well, as we continue to move toward that direction of opening a satellite site. Again, we hope to have some new information very, very soon, certainly no later than our next meeting, and I would assume before then we'll be able to report out what we're doing and how that's going. But that's going well. And during this whole time, another thing that we have to do is, we're negotiating with the HEA, and I want to thank the HEA. We are continuing to work collaboratively with them, with the association itself and regarding the working conditions, which are subject to mandatory bargaining. So we are meeting regularly, and we'll continue to do that until we have all of our sticking points resolved. But thank you to them, and much appreciated all the work that they're putting in as well, and our own team of folks. Things are moving forward, they are progressing. So in difficult times, I want to give you the good news is that we are continuing to move forward, and we're going to continue to do so as long as we're able to. So, thank you. Those are my two updates.
Thank you, Dr. Austin. Does anyone on the committee have a question about these two updates? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Does anyone in the public have a question about the updates? If you do, again, click on Participants, and then use the Raise Hand function at the bottom right, and I'll, again, I'll give it a second.
So Carrie, I actually do have a question.
Okay, Libby?
Go ahead. Dr. Austin, how many personnel would you have to fire, do you have to hire for St. Jerome?
Well, we haven't come to that exact number yet, but some of those things that I listed on here tonight are those things that we'll need to consider. We're going to need to have a, at least a contracted nurse on-site, we're going to have to have custodial services. We may need to have a temporary administrator there for a period of time, and so we're still solidifying all those, all those details right now.
What about teachers and parent educators?
Yeah, well, that goes without saying, obviously, and so part of the deal is, obviously, we're going to move, we'll have to move some people to that building. But if we need to hire any additional staff, we'll certainly take that on and report that to you when that gets closer.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had one question. I've received a number of questions about transportation, and can parents drive their kids instead, or can we do waivers? Is, by getting these five buses, does that negate the need for that, for a transportation survey, and parents, like a waiver for?
I'll let Mr. Ferris answer that in just a second, as regarding, as far as the need goes on. I will say, there are waivers, there are waivers that we could do with parents that allow them to sign off that they will transport their own students, and many people do. But the idea was that, at this point where we really wanted to bring in more students, we wanted to have more busing available. You know, we have even, even students in the older, the older grades, or the upper grades, that really live a long ways away and don't have opportunity. We're doing our very best to transport all the students that we can during this time. So, but Mr. Ferris, you want to add anything to that at all?
Yeah, I would say that the, I mean, it's a lot of the buses we get in the equipment, so we make sure that we have it, Carrie. The, you know, we still, we don't have any of these five drivers, and we have to go through a process of hiring them, you know. Patrick's got 25 applications, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to result in 25 drivers, and then, you know, they each need at least 68 hours of training time in order to get their CDL license, which is no sort of, you know, minor effort for the most part. But the, the idea was, you know, that we would have these buses available so we can, in fact, expand the number of kids that get into school. You know, if we, when we get over to St. Jerome's, it may help, especially if we're doing the older grades, because, you know, people from Crow's Point are going to have to get over there. So I didn't want to get cut short on busing, so we got these buses, but it's not a pianist here for everything. You know, it doesn't satisfy, it won't satisfy all the solutions. You know, until we get drivers, then maybe we'll have to reassess it.
Okay. All right, thank you. I see Kristin Pringle's hand up.
Hi, thanks. Just to follow up on the busing situation, I'm wondering if, and I know we didn't do the survey, but it seems like maybe it would be worth doing the survey first before we spent all these resources on the buses and worry about training the bus drivers. I feel like people in the community would be so willing to drive the kids, and I just don't want to spin our wheels and waste resources or hold up anything on the bus situation. I think it would be better to kind of do a needs-based survey to see, because if people are willing to drive their kids and we sign a waiver, then we don't have to go down that route to get the buses. We could save that money, we're already short-funded on so many other things, like, let's conserve resources where we're able to. That's, that's a thought I had.
Mr. Ferris, do you want to respond to that at all? I don't see that the buses would ever go to waste for us, but...
No, the buses won't go to waste. So, and the idea is, we have to be ready to get something done and to expand our capacity. And we don't want to wait till we get to the point where we can, in fact, expand the capacity for getting this type of equipment, especially if we're going to different locations. So, I mean, you know, I, and then, you know, there's a lot of people, so while there may be many people that are willing, there's still going to be outliers that can't, and, you know, in order to satisfy that need, we're going to need more equipment.
But to really determine a need, I think it's best to do a survey, just having worked in research and public health data and collecting that, I feel like, how do you really know what the need is without surveying what the community is willing to do? I know, I know there's outlying areas, and there's dangerous traffic patterns on 3A, and I get it, there's, there's going to be a need for some buses, but I just, I know resources are so tight, it just seems like a way that we could potentially conserve some of those resources and use for something else, with just a quick survey that's cheap, you know, survey monkeys doesn't cost any money.
How are pillars, arches, et cetera?
If you're, if you were not muted, could you, thanks.
Yeah, Kristin, what I would just say to that, I do understand your question, I do understand your concern. We haven't done the survey yet, because I'm not exactly sure what we're going to need and where, as far as what the schedules are, and what the schools are going to. So we are obviously taking some very proactive steps to get us ready for that. We are going to need some parents to transport. There's no question about that. I think we also want, as Mr. Ferris just said, we also have some students that live way out on the outlying side of the district and are going to need that transportation, so we're trying to, trying to meet that need ahead of time. We certainly do appreciate it.
And the last thing I just might add is that any survey is not a commitment for the most part, you know, and that, that could wreak havoc, you know, where, oh yeah, no, I'll take my kid, and then the next thing you know, they can't, and, you know, we can't fit people on a bus, so, I mean, that's, it's sort of a risky proposition. It's good to take surveys, we will take surveys, we will get the information of where we've got to get these buses going, but the, the equipment generally for the size of population that we have, and the limitation and the reduced capacity of 25 kids, is, you know, we'll need the equipment. And the other thing too is, you know, we've already expanded to 1.5 miles, it's like, with, with the extra equipment, we might be able to help some of those people in that areas, those areas that cannot transport their kids. You know, so it's a, it's a sort of like, we, our desire would always be to go beyond policy if we could, but we have to establish policy and then try to do the best we can.
Great, thank you. And I see Suzie O'Horos hand up.
Hi, I just had a quick question. Suzie O'Horos, up in Wanderstrive. I just wanted to understand what the timeframe is for all of this, because I hear a lot of, oh, we have to get bus drivers, and we have to train them, and we have to figure out, you know, a survey, and the holidays are coming, and, you know, I would like just to get some sort of timeframe, because originally it was sort of floated around that the beginning of January was perhaps a, when some elementary schools would be reintroduced, but then I heard at the coffee, further in January was discussed. So I just wanted to get a better understanding of what the timeframe we're all thinking here is, and what, and also what the status is with Wednesdays.
Yep, two things. The, the date that we're still targeting is still right after the winter break, so it would be right after the January, I think, you know, and as I've said, this is all subject to, we still have to go through collective bargaining, we still have to make sure that St. Jerome's is ready, but that's still our target, that hasn't changed. In regards to Wednesday, that's a matter of negotiations, and we'll be taking in negotiations. So we're still targeting just what we're trying to do. It has not changed.
Great, thank you. Sorry. Did you? Okay. All right, 5.1 is Student Communications. Carly is representing the Hingham Girls volleyball team tonight, so she's not joining us, she'll be here next time. 5.2 is Communications Received by the Superintendent.
Yeah, just quickly tonight, and some sad news that I just wanted to pass along, because we did hear early this last week that a long-term teacher at Hingham Middle School passed away. Jim Quine passed away last week, and Jim was a teacher from 2007, special educator at Hingham Middle School, and from all accounts, people that knew Jim and the work that he did, he was very much beloved and will be very missed, and certainly want to pass that on of my condolences to the family, who are lovely as well, and wish them all the best during a very difficult time, so certainly wanted to pass that on to you. That's all I have.
Yeah, we're, we're thinking of his family too during this. It's difficult. Item 5.3 is Other Communications. Does anyone on the committee have anything else? Okay, not seeing any. Item 6, Unfinished Business. 6.1 is to hear an update on the work of the Equity and Inclusion Task Force. I think this is Dr. Lavilla.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for having me to give a brief update on the work of the Equity and Inclusion Working Group. Right now, we are in the process of conducting presentations to all six of the district's parent-teacher organizations, PTOs, as well as the District Special Education Parent Advisory Council. At that, at those meetings, we are presenting the district's vision, our definition of educational equity, an outline of the activities we have underway, namely our equity audit, which I'll talk to in just a moment, as well as our Courageous Conversation series, which are about to launch mid-December. And then we're getting the feedback of the community relative to the district and the community's strengths, our weaknesses, where the opportunities may lie as we start this work, as well as any threats that might be to our vision for equity. And that feedback is truly helping us inform the finer details in our planning to ensure the plan that we do release this June is as comprehensive and as thoughtful as possible to be as effective as it can be within, within our community. So the major activity of the group at this point is, at the last meeting, and I should mention, a big, huge thank you to Ness Corente, School Committee member, who is the committee's liaison to this work. She's been involved in all of our meetings and has been taking notes for the discussions, and I just want to give a shout out to Ness for what a great job she's been doing, supporting the district's work around equity and inclusion. So thank you, Ness, for all your hard work there. The, the main activities right now is preparing for a series of courageous conversations. The theory of action behind this work really lies in hearing from the people who historically have had the least amount of power within the organization, within the structures. So our goal is to hear directly from students, from faculty, from community members, as well as from our alumni, who are Black, Indigenous, people of color, who might be identified as LGBTQ+, whom identify as linguistically diverse, or socio-economically diverse, or culturally diverse, or religious diversity, to hear their direct feedback about what their experiences have been here in the district, to help us ensure that the areas in which we are doing a data analysis and audit around are the actual areas that we need to be focusing on. So those are what we're referring to as courageous conversations, which will happen with facilitators who will come from the Equity and Inclusion Team, as well as from community and student volunteers, who will come together, work with the team on how to facilitate and lead these discussions. And that is, again, to really get the feedback and hear sort of the stories and the qualitative experiences of people who have been living and breathing our district, and been a part of the community and part of the culture here, so we can really hear their feedback. The goal for those conversations, again, is to launch mid-December through mid-February. And again, the information that we gain from those groups is really to help us better ensure that the areas for deeper analysis of the audit are the areas that we are meant to be looking at. And so when it comes to the audit, that is a major undertaking that the team will be working on this year, and the outcome of that audit will be the data that we use to actually form the district's equity and inclusion plan. And so we are looking at 12 major areas of the district's operations. We are first looking at our teaching quality, teacher quality and diversity, so asking questions such as, do all of our students have access to students, to teachers of the similar racial backgrounds? We're also going to be looking at rigorous and empowering content, so asking questions such as, do all students have access to consistently rigorous curricula and instructional materials? Looking at our instructional time and attention, so do all students, for example, receive extra support during the school day, to receive additional support in areas or subjects in which they might need additional support in? Looking at our student support interventions. So, for example, do all of our students have access to a rigorous and unbiased special education identification process? Looking at high-quality early learning. So of our kindergarten population, do all of those kindergarten families have access to high-quality and/or have experience in high-quality pre-kindergarten programs? Looking at school culture and climate, so do all of our students feel connected and engaged to their school community? Family, family and academic engagement, so do all, for example, do all families feel welcome and included in the school environment? Family, family and academic engagement. So do all, for example, do all families feel welcome and included in the school environment? Diverse and equitable schools. Do all students attend schools, for example, and enroll with peers from diverse racial and economic backgrounds? School funding. So do our schools who serve our most highest need students or most at-risk students receive appropriate funding and resources to support that population of students? Looking at the quality and diversity in our school leadership and administrative team. Looking also at learning-ready facilities. So to what extent do our school facilities and buildings provide an equitable learning experience for all of our students? As well as access to extracurricular, co-curricular and athletic experiences? And to what extent do all students participate? Now, as we do the work of the audit, what I should note is that for every major question that we ask under those category, those sort of categories, we'll be looking at the extent to which the district is responsive to that question. So what is the, what is the configuration of those data points across the district? Is there? And to what extent is there variation across school? And then to what extent is there variation across student group? So our, the goal for the year, and, and I think right now we're still in draft phase with the actual tool we're going to be using. And that's why I'm not presenting it more formally tonight. Hopefully at the December meeting, when I give my update, I'll be able to share more formally the final audit document, the document that our team will be looking at throughout the course of the year. And again, the, the purpose of the audit is to really inform the district's plan to ensure that our strategies and our action planning is done in the areas that the audit reveals to be most necessary for improvement. So I'll pause there if there's any questions, but that's again, a very brief update of where we are with our work. And we are meeting on Wednesday afternoon. And at that point, we'll begin to book and recruit for our courageous conversation series, which we hope to launch in mid-December.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
I have a question. Would you kindly also include the possibility of looking into the need of providing diversity and inclusion training for staff? That's something I brought up many times. I really believe that that would be imperative. So as an action plan, would be to actually conduct those trainings. There is individuals at the state level at the Office of Diversity and Equal Opportunity available to do those trainings, perhaps free of charge. And I just want to, you know, you to consider including that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyway, if anyone, no one else on the committee has any questions, I see Sarah Ross's hand up.
Hi, Sarah Ross, 125 Wamper Tuck Road. I just had a question about the discussions that are happening at all the schools. I know on the Hingham public school website, it looks like everything is listed except for the middle school. Is there a date for the middle school and/or can the public obviously attend any, I guess, meeting? That's on the calendar?
There is a date for the middle school, although it's not confirmed yet with the PTO president. It was supposed to be this Thursday evening, but it actually conflicts with the scheduled meeting with the foster PTO. And it had to be rescheduled for December. So once I hear back from, again, from the, the president at the middle school, I'll be happy to let the community know when that date is booked for, but we are just waiting. We had a double booking on this, for this Thursday night. I was already pre-booked to be with foster PTO at 7:30. What I will note, Sarah, is once the, the presentations are done to the six PTOs and the CPAC is already finished. But once the presentations are done, we actually did record the very first one with the high school PTO. And so once those in-person discussions are done, we will be posting that presentation to the website, as well as a Google form where people can provide feedback to the four prompts through digital meet. So if you can't make an in-person presentation, there'll be an opportunity to watch it at your leisure. And again, it's a very brief recording, it's only about 15 minutes or so. And then there's four questions that you'll be asked to fill out through Google. So if you, again, even if you can't make one of the other meetings, but yes, you're welcome to go to any of the PTO meetings, actually. Just let me know if you want to switch off and I'll make sure you have the right link, because I know that the, that link kind of goes to the parents in that building. But do let me know if you want to attend any of the others, because I'm sure the other PTOs are more than happy to have others join for that discussion. And the, I will note that we have four down and three to go. And the four that we've done so far have been very productive. Ness, I'll turn it over to you if you want to talk at all about what you've observed to those conversations, but they've actually been quite effective in helping us refine our work to make sure we're controlling for any potential areas that might give us a problem later. But I hope that answers your question, Sarah, but you, but there will be one for the middle school. We just are waiting on the date for December.
Okay, great. I'll look out for that one. And if not, I'll reach out. Like you said, I couldn't do the, join the high school one. I had a conflict, but thank you.
Sure thing.
For the update.
Thank you, Sarah. I see Lynn Vanderheven.
Hi, thanks, Carrie. Dr. Lavilla, I haven't been able to get to one of the meetings yet either. And I was just wondering, two questions. I had heard you mention previously that you were gathering data and that that was a project that had started and that you had been working on. I was wondering if you could explain the difference between the data that you've been gathering versus the audit that you just described. So that was question number one. And then question number two was, did you say, so when you talk about June, so are we not going to launch into any sort of curriculum or trainings for the teachers to Carlos's point until next school year?
Sure. So I'll take your first quest, the, the first part first and onto the second after. Some of the data we already have, right? So, so that we have MCAS comparisons by subgroup, we actually, we also have college acceptances, performance on college board exams, we have results of in-class assessments and, and screening data. We don't, however, have some other pieces like students' perceptions of safety or feeling connected or families or parents' perceptions of involvement or being welcomed in a school community. So that's part of where the audit is, is asking, is forcing us to ask some really sort of focused questions. And part of what our team is currently working through is if we don't have an existing data source, what would that data source be? Right? So that's part of where the audit's a little different. So we do have some data. But the other part is we're trying to do a 360 review because the reality is because we're all members of this organization or this community, we could very well be susceptible to blind spots or, or not seeing some areas in need that are running in front of our face because frankly, we're all a little too close to the, to the dilemma. So the audit tool is really forcing us to ask some really tough questions and sort of step outside of the organization and, and sort of partner with data analysts or sort of other vendors who might sort of have a solution for us as we seek to find ways to actually get that information to inform the work. So we, we've been looking at the data that we currently have and the audits that we've received from the state in terms of equity and access. But, but there's a lot of areas as we're uncovering, as we talk about, for example, I actually, we actually don't know the student distribution by group of who participates in extracurricular or athletic activities. And it'd be interesting to see, or the, the analysis by gender of you know, boys versus girls who participate in upper-level mathematics classes or science classes versus the arts or English electives, right? So part of the work we're doing now with the audit is to really dig deep into our practices and our, how we're structured and, and identify those, those areas for us to really adjust and focus on in terms of the plan. Now, in terms of when the plan will launch, so if we go back in time, this actually launched with our faculty in the fall of 2019. We introduced the concept of the work that was underway. We actually kicked off the initial training with our faculty just this, this year last March. All of them received a presentation on implicit bias within schooling and systematic racism as delivered by Johnny Cole, the Director of Equity and Inclusion for the Lexington Public Schools. As luck would have it, that occurred on March 3rd and the district shut down the next week. So we now find ourselves in an odd time of, we were at a place where we were just beginning to build momentum with our work. The team worked on our vision, our definition. We had all of our plans outlined. We had our partnership all worked out with our speakers. And then the, the world stopped. So to your point, right now, we're taking the year where really our teaching faculty's number one priority needs to be on the teaching and learning with our students every day. Their professional development program for the year is booked. And we're looking ahead to next year to launch not only the training, because the, the training can't happen in isolation, right? This is not a problem or a dilemma that we will solve by giving us the teachers a presenter, right? And talking about the problem. We need actionable steps where we're going to begin to sort of see some systemic change in the, within the organization itself. So the goal is to take this year to really do a deep dive into the audit work. Meeting tomorrow morning with the communications person, talk about how best to communicate this work with the community. We've been meeting with consultants and data analysts to sort of help us really fine tune the work that we need to do and actually be thoughtful of what we have to contract out for versus what we can handle internally in terms of our own workloads. And the goal i- is to sort of launch in the fall with a comprehensive, multi-dimensional plan, which has action plans and strategies across multiple fronts. I hope that better, I hope those, that answers your questions and I'd be happy to take any follow-up one if you have any.
Yeah, I think I was just confused with the amount of data that had been gathered and I, I feel like now we're gathering more data and it feels like the, the Equity and Inclusion project that you're working on is so vast. With the social climate that we have now, I think that I, I was misunderstanding actually what the scope of the project was as opposed to what it sounds like you're laying out. So I, I appreciate the explanation.
Great, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands, so we will move on to 6.2. Review the proposed fiscal year 22 budget calendar and guiding principles and act as appropriate.
Thank you, Chair. And the, just a, just a follow-up. So we had started this at the last meeting and, and so in your packets tonight, you have the calendar that we have, which really didn't have any changes. We didn't have any feedback on that. I'm aware of that. We, so we bring the forward, the calendar again. I think the, the biggest change obviously is in the guiding principles that people were concerned about the wording of that. And so we certainly worked on that and brought that forward to you tonight. Where it reads, and if you'd like me to read just the first paragraph of that, where due to the COVID-19 and the lack of visibility for FY '22, the FY '22 budget process will be truncated and our post-budget will be developed based on the needs identified in our fiscal year 21 budget. If you all remember, I had the, the multiple tiers in that budget. So we will include that in the FY '22 budget, along with several key initiatives added that the administration believes are essential for meeting the needs of our students and school community in FY '22 and going forward. With the basic premise that Hingham will maintain is focus on providing the highest quality education for all Hingham students to follow in parameters and presumption will be used in the development of the FY '22 budget. A, the budget will presume a continuation of enrollment from the March 1, 2020 enrollment count. The budget will presume a continuation of all full-time equivalent approved in the FY '21 budget. It will also have all personal salaries. Personnel salaries will be stepped up according to the terms qualified in the appropriate collective bargaining agreement. Where CBAs have not yet been completed, on the budget process begins an allowance will be provided for two years. The adopted budget of the school committee will, one, provide for expanded Hingham-tiered system of support services necessary to remediate full odds of academic progress resulting from COVID-19. So we're creating a new tiered system of HTSS for academic. Fund the process and development of a five-year Hingham Public Schools strategic plan. Provide for staffing and support for special education to ensure that the district is able to appropriately and adequately address the needs of students, staff and the community. Fund the resources required for our first year of the district's Equity and Inclusion Plan that Dr. Lavilla just talked about. And then provide for needed personnel support for central office administration, which includes the addition of a payroll clerk and an administrative assistance form, data analytics, and provide school committee, social media agents support.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions about this? Or comments?
I do. Yeah, so has to do with the wording of several key initiatives. And I'm wondering if those key initiatives are the ones that are spelled out below. I see two. I think, I'm not, what my question is, is the key initiatives, are they referring to the five-year strategic plan and the district's Equity and Inclusion Plan? Because those are two new initiatives. Or are, are you anticipating more different key initiatives that are going to go into this?
Well, I think that, you know, the intent is, there are actually four. Libby, which is the, the HTSS tiered support for academic is a new initiative that we do not have currently in the budget. So that's one. Two, it is the strategic plan, as you talked about. Three, looking at our special education staffing. So we may have to have additional staff. We do anticipate an increase in the numbers of students who receive special education. And so we need to do some work there. And then of course, the funding of the Equity Inclusion Plan. And then looking at our central office structure and, and ensuring that we have adequate support for the operations of the district. So it's pretty, it's five pretty clear initiatives that are not on the current budget.
Okay, I, 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 okay, thank you. That just clarifies the word initiative. Okay, thank you.
Carrie?
Yeah, Carlos?
Just make an amendment to the calendar, changing November 10th to the 17th.
Oh, yeah. The joint forecast meeting. Yeah. That's a good catch. Thank you. Yeah, and I, there's been a lot of conversation in the community around the school budget, which is great. I mean, it's great to see all the parent involvement. And people have asked when they can give their input for the fiscal year 22 budget. And I think I would say that you can reach out to any of us at any time to give your input about the priorities of the district. But when the real work is going to start on that, well, probably, I'm looking at the calendar, December 8th, we have a couple of those capital and facilities subcommittee and then the finance subcommittee meeting. That's when we're really going to start to begin. It'll feed it to the full committee in January. So for members of the public, if you are interested in, in input, as you said, we're all open to talking at any time. But those are the meetings where all the work's going to happen. I see Heather Henderson.
Yes, I'm just wondering if we have any idea of how the budget might change based on how many students or what the number of students in Hingham has changed based on unenrollment from the school system? Like, do we know how many or how the unenrollment has changed this year?
No, I mean, we, we've tracked that clearly from day one. Heather, what we're presuming, we do presume that we're going to get those students back when we go back into a regular session. So the budget will be built upon that number.
And you mentioned also that the, you expect special ed or more kids to be eligible for special education. Can you speak a little bit more to that, please?
Yeah, I think, you know, without, without question, as students who perhaps have struggled in the past, who have really struggled during this entire period in the loss of instruction or direct instruction at the level that they, that they need or certainly what they would normally have in a, in a regular year. We do anticipate that could lead to an additional number of students who may now qualify for special education services. That, that's a guess. I don't, we don't know that for sure, but we want to prepare for that.
That's a good guess. Thank you.
Give that credit to our Director of Student Services, Dr. Suzanne Vines, who is very up on those things.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands. So I will, and I just wanted to ask the guiding principles and the calendar will be on the website, right?
Absolutely. We will get that on the website as soon as, we may need to make that amendment. If it passes tonight, then we'll get it on the website. After.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I'll take a motion to adopt the proposed fiscal year budget calendar with the amendment and the guiding principles.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 2022 budget calendar as amended and the guiding principles.
We have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, we'll do roll call vote. Michelle?
Sorry, aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Bye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So these are adopted. Okay, next, 6.3 to review policy section J, which is students of the Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual and act as appropriate. Now, this is our third read of this. And it has been on the website since, since July. This covers a, a large amount of ground. As with the other sections, we've been, we've gone over it with the assistance of the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Association of School Committees Field Directors. And we reviewed the MASC sample policies alongside the existing Hingham Public Schools policies to ensure to ensure that we have everything we need for legal, to meet our legal requirements and to reflect best practices. Um Dr. Austin and Pam King, who has formerly worked for him, participated in the discussions as well. Um so unlike the previous sections, which mainly govern behind-the-scenes operations, this one impacts students directly. And it'll be important that these policies and the handbooks align. Um samples of policies in this section include equal educational opportunities, attendance areas, entrance age, homeless students, educational opportunities for military children, educational opportunities for children in foster care, student dress code, bullying prevention, student complaints and grievances, uh interscholastic athletics, and communicable diseases, among others. Um so this, as I said, this has been on the website since early July. Um and uh Dr. Austin has also shared it with um the HEA for feedback, too. So um with that, does is there any discussion on section J? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Is anyone in the audience? Okay, I'm not seeing any there either. And so at that case, um I will take a motion to adopt section J of the Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual in form to be adopted once the school committee accepts the whole manual.
I'll make a motion to adopt the policy section J of students for of the Hingham Public Schools in policy manual in form as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. And uh roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. And thank you to Liza and Libby for all of your work on that. That's, this was a big section.
And thank you to Carrie, too, with all she's doing being chair. She's being very diligent and detailed on all these policies and it's been, it's it's a lot of detail work. So Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh new business, seven point one, to receive the superintendent's evaluation rubric for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty twenty-one and act as appropriate. Um so the executive committee met with Dr. Austin to go over these indicators um and talk about which ones are important for this year. The rubric is, all of the indicators in the rubric are important, but we we asked ourselves which ones were the most important um for this year. So Dr. Austin, did you want to speak to any of these?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to the executive committee. We had a wonderful co- conversation about the um needs of the district and aligning those needs with uh the areas that you'd like me to focus on. And so for this year, uh in the instructional leadership standard, uh we'll be looking at student engagement. Uh obviously very important as we are in the uh COVID times right now and and remote learning. Under uh management and operations, we're going to um uh clearly look at student health and safety. Um another very important uh area as well as um recruitment and hiring strategies. All things that are near and dear to our heart right now during these uh very challenging times. Under standard three, the family and community engagement, we're looking at community and stakeholder engagement, um which will be very important as we now look at the uh strategic plan uh for the for the years to come, as well as the uh being uh ensuring that we are culturally proficient uh in our communication uh and in the equity work we're doing. Uh and finally, in the professional culture under uh standard four, we're looking at overall communication, um which uh is is very, very important uh during this time. And finally, uh the uh shared vision development, uh which is really the the keynote for uh strategic development uh and reviewing that uh moving forward. So those are the the areas that we'll be uh looking at for evaluation.
Yeah, for members of the public who um may not have been at these meetings before, the superintendent is evaluated uh once a year and he will be coming up with goals that we'll we'll vote on and approve. Um and we have, the state provides a rubric to evaluate the superintendent. So this should happen, I believe, in the summer. Um so we will we'll work on it then, but these were, now this is just everybody agreeing on what the standards are. So is there anyone on the committee that has any comments or questions? Ness?
Yeah, um so under uh standard two, management and operations, there's social and emotional well-being. Um I'm not sure if you will cover that in the student health and safety, but I thought that that would be a really important one this year.
Yeah, what what I would say to this and and absoluteness and and that's something that it's an ongoing piece of work for the district. And and I would also say that we do all of these things under the standards. They're all important. Um this is just the agreement of what we've agreed that we're going to measure this year. Uh and and so there was some discussion about that as well. I'm pretty sure we exa- uh discussed that in the executive committee um to determine whether or not we were going to use that. And um but we also think that that's a normal part of our regular routine every day. Those are expectations that we need to ensure to happen uh ongoing. Uh and so that's why we we chose to uh, they're important, but not included in the evaluations.
Libby?
Uh yeah, and so to um to Dr. Austin's point that all of these um indicators are important. Um the, I had pointed out during our meeting that the fiscal system, the indicator was important on um argued that we should evaluate him on that uh just because I feel very strongly that for uh next year's budget, we have a big ask coming up and we need to be able to support that big ask. And um he did a a really fabulous job last year setting us up for that and I'm just hoping that we can do that again this year. And um we gained a lot of traction last year. I don't want to lose any of that just because of COVID. And um we've got a big leap forward next year. And so that's something that um we know we can, we can do and I I don't want to lose sight of that. Um but it's important that we could really only, we had to really pick and choose very carefully which ones we were actually going to evaluate.
Right, and we we can talk about that, that it's it's more, it's we're, this is all important and we have to focus on all of it, but it's what are we going to evaluate Dr. Austin on this year? And um and then what's maybe a a would be a better indicator next year or the year after that. So um but I agree with you, Ness, that the social, emotional well-being of students is, I mean, it's it's such a priority right now and it's it's given the current circumstances, it's just, it's very difficult. So does anyone else on the committee have? Okay, um in that case, I'll take a motion to um accept the superintendent's evaluation rubric indicators as recommended.
I'll make a motion that we approve the superintendent's evaluation rubri- rubric for uh twenty 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 uh twenty-one as recommended.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Okay, uh roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So these are adopted. Thank you, everyone. Um seven point two is to hear an update on the fiscal year twenty-one HPS operating budget. And this is in preparation for our meeting, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee tomorrow night.
Thank you, Chairperson Lee. Um yeah, it it just a just a qualifier, just before I um, I'm going to turn it over here in just a minute to to Mr. Ferris, who will explain that the numbers that are in your uh packet tonight. You'll have a um school reopening cost sheet as well as our ongoing um budget. Overall, on the on the uh second page of what you have in front of you tonight. Uh a- as you said, this is, our meeting tomorrow night with the Board of Selectmen, um doesn't necessarily go deep into the budget that we have. In fact, it was the intent of that uh meeting tomorrow night is to pull over the the austerity plan, those those measures that we put into place and that we agreed to town that we would take during the COVID crisis to manage budget. Uh and and that's only going to cover up until the first quarter, uh up until January, June, I'm sorry, September thirtieth. Uh sometimes hard to remember what date it is anymore. Um but um it's really up until September thirtieth for that first quarter of of our, the measures we've taken to uh ensure that our budget um will be adequate to to move on to the the year. So we want to use this opportunity to provide the budget updates and we'll do this regularly uh as we continue through the year to the public to hear the uh the full um issues that we're dealing with uh and how we're using our money right now, which is a, you know, should be a much deeper discussion, uh an explanation of of how things are going right now. Uh so we want to make sure that we provide that to the community. Uh with that, um you know, we will, I'll I'll tell everybody that this is an incredibly fluid situation. I think we all know that. Um what is true today could very well not be true tomorrow. Uh and these are the the moving ground underneath us that we're all trying to grapple with. Uh and some of us are doing it in our own homes. We get it. Uh and so we're doing our best to manage the money the the best that we can that the town uh gives us to to move forward. Uh and uh so we will continue to do so throughout the year. But Mr. Ferris, if you want to uh run through the uh the pages that you provided for everyone tonight.
Sure, thank you, uh Dr. Austin. I appreciate it. Um Julie, so should I be um? Do you want me to share my screen or do you want to stick uh uh stick the documents up? If uh, because I'll start off with the um, I meant to start, I'll start off with the forecast. This is um in November. I mean, it's really a very, very early time to do a forecast and and a little bit premature. Um let me see if I can share the screen if I'm allowed. Okay. Yeah. So share that. Okay. Is everybody seeing the screen?
Yeah.
You see this? Okay, so this is um the budget forecast as of November third. So everybody's seeing that?
Yes, John.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Um so let me, let me just go down to the bottom, give you the highlights to to begin with right now. So the the total operating budget as we look at, right now I'm showing a negative of uh um if you include capital in there, negative of one million, six hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Um and then, you know, presumed reimbursable through Plymouth County KIRZ Act. We've made two filings so far, and tho- those I'll show you on the other detail sheet of those two filings. You know, we wouldn't expect to get about thirteen um one million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-fourth uh dollars back right now, reimbursed, which would essentially go back into the school budget as a revisement. Um so, you know, we're we're sitting right now and this is in November.
No, thank you, Emily. I said no!
Okay. Excuse me, is uh is three hundred and five thousand dollars. And and I I gotta assure you that, you know, three hundred and five thousand dollars as of right now, if if this was a regular year, that would be equivalent of zero. I mean, very easily to me, you know, very easy to manage when you're, when you're looking at a sixty thousand, uh sixty million dollar budget. Um you know, going up to the top. So interesting things, you know, what what the exercise for doing a forecast now is good for, you you start to see a number of things develop in the numbers. Um you know, for example, like the, you know, there's some positives in this too, right? So clearly we have a negative. And that's really, that negative is really the um big impact of the loss of revenue for full-day kindergarten. Um you know, the inability to find regular parents and um you know, some churn in the regular teachers where, you know, if they're, if they're going out on a long-term assignment or a leave of absence or something, you know, getting the other people hired. So you know, you saw um and when we show you the other one, the the loss of revenue is really like about one point two million, but you see, you know, from a forecast out, um some of that money is um is actually, you know, it's showing more like four hundred thousand dollars uh, you know, for a change. Um if you look at textbooks, so most of our, most of our spending is happening down here in technology, right? So we're not buying textbooks. What we're doing is we're buying online tools so that people can, so that we can, you know, um remotely teach and 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 be more effective in teaching and make those uh products available to the children or and the students all the time. So you see that, you know, textbooks is actually um, you know, the austerity measures. Don't buy textbooks. Let's buy the tools that we actually need for this year. So you see a savings of a couple hundred thousand dollars there. Um library, there's no Paris in the library. Um and plus two, we we wouldn't be buying a whole bunch of library books that we can't um necessarily loan out. And the other side of that, too, is actually we have a relationship with the Towns Library, um where it's sort of the um the online licenses have been expanded, so students have the ability to um pull more books from the regular library um through the OCN network. This uh, the the fifty-four thousand, it's sort of offset down below, um you know, it's sort of a a booking measure. This psychological services, that benefit, we're seeing that in contractors as opposed to sped. You look at the um, you know, transportation, so um, you know, regular buses and the loss of the Kids in Action offset. Kids in Action was pos- uh um putting in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars overall to the um the operating budget. Some of it was maintenance, but about sixty thousand of that was um through regular buses. Um so in this number also includes the cost of leasing those five um new buses. Um but what's interesting is you see that, you know, we don't have Wednesdays going on here either, right? So one twenty-four, considering all the additional expenditures, doesn't look so bad right now because there's, while while the bus driver's on a regular day, maybe putting in an extra hour, that Wednesday's sort of a shortened day. So, you know, there's some give and takes in some of these. Athletics, I'm projecting, you know, reduced activity at this point in time. We don't know. I don't know how that's going to go. I don't know if all of a sudden they, you know, they're going to have that fourth winter, the they're going to have a double session in the spring and things will pump up. But, you know, what I'm projecting right here is about a reduced uh reduced activity. Same thing with the with the other student services. The uh, so baked into these numbers here, baked into the expanded forecast, is my my um incremental expense sheet. Okay, so so basically, when we look at this expanded forecast, okay, I'm thinking all of those projected expenditures that I have in the incremental spend account, which I will go into in detail in in another minute or so, are baked into those. So when we get down to custodian, you know, we we haven't been able to get all of the cleaners that we need. Um you know, and we're still having some trouble hiring. And these would be projected out through the end of the year. Um you know, when you don't have a full staff all the time, um you tend to uh, you know, the 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 savings can actually add up fairly quickly. Um a little, right now I'm projecting heating of buildings and um, you know, that with with um us shutting down, um we have the buildings filling out open on the weekends. So there should be somewhat uh some types of savings um on the heating of the buildings because we'll just take them down to uh to lower levels. And um, you know, we may see some uh more benefits in utilities, too, but I don't have any projected right now. Because of the the lighting electric company, the rates have sort of gone up a little bit. Um you know, from year to year. So but perhaps, you know, it depends on the winter, right? We don't know we what what will happen. Um we've been fortunate. We've had a warm November. Um you know, that should help the situation some. We're really, when you look at utilities, we're sort of, we're not running on the weekend, but we are running the buildings full-time because we have we're we're, you know, all the buildings are sort of coming up two hours before and they're basically staying on two hours later, um you know, to accommodate the uh the MOA. Grounds, you know, just that that's sort of a basic plant maintenance. You see a big negative here of seven forty-nine, and that's a lot of COVID um related items. This is, um you know, so the here, you see this big negative here, that's um, you know, for um the Libby rental that we have and um anticipated expenditures for proc- procuring the space and uh at um St. Jerome's and and making it ready. Okay? So it's not only rent, but it's going to be, you know, you have uh going to be cleaning. Um we'll have to uh, you know, get the technology set up. So there's a, there's a fair amount of uh work that would go into that. These, this is really, um this one here is an accounting issue. So we, in the budget shows one thing, but this the, this is really booked down below in council and services. So um that's just accounting. Sped instruction, uh we had um some delay in grant approvals. That was one piece of it. So we weren't able to charge any of the um people to the grant like we normally would. Um and you know, we've had some uh employee churn. So I would expect a lot of us to um, you know, a lot of the the benefits really to to reverse, sort of stay equal. Would the grants have been approved now? So now we'll be able to take those employees and charge them to the grants. This was that um offset from up above where I showed the counselor of uh, who's counselor up here, this one here. So you see that negative. So that's just an accounting issue. This one here I found pretty interesting. I had This one here I found pretty interesting, I hadn't thought about it, but you start looking at the numbers and you see it. So along with, you know, we're in hybrid, but many other schools are in hybrid as well. So, you know, that, that really results in some reduced trips for special ed, you know, out-of-district placements that were performing through contractors. And then also, you know, we did buy a couple of other vans so that we're handling some of that activity ourselves. And we are fortunate, a number of parents are driving their kids as well, so that represents some savings to the district. This is use of last year's grants to apply some of the tuitions to. And the two capital items, so I've delayed a number of projects and potentially completely deferred. A couple of them, you know, one of them, say, one of the big drivers in there would be the Best of Yule at Plymouth River. You know, that was $80,000 and it's, you know, we went up to it a couple of times and that was about a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we didn't, we put that one on hold and said we'd use some of the money to evaluate moving the library, which I think we should and we could, but I don't think we necessarily have to do it this year. I think especially if we get a Plymouth River Windows project in play, you know, we could throw all of that into like one package, I would think, as we, as we go in that direction. So there's, and these, this is in your notes and stuff in the packet, so these are the explanations that I have. So when that all comes down, the grand total negative is 1,511,000 dollars. And that's because capital's sort of offsetting the operating budget, right? So when we look at the money that we get, it's really the appropriation to the school committee is two pieces. It's the operating budget, but it's also that capital appropriation. And the capital appropriation that comes to the school committee is also to be used at the discretion of the school committee. So, you know, that would effectively offset. If you looked at slowly the operating budget and said, you know, capital wasn't going to offset it, that would be a negative of almost 1.7. But we have these two filings, which I would expect to offset, and we have another filing to go. We, in these two filings, we have not submitted a payroll reimbursement yet. And, you know, we are gathering all the hours, extra hours that we have, so we will submit that. We wanted to kind of separate those because we just, we were unsure for the most part of how the payroll, we didn't want the payroll to interrupt these big reimbursement requests that we were getting. Because once you get one of the big reimbursement requests in, once it comes into the town, then you can reasonably, we will know that, you know, this grant money that we're supposed to get, we will in fact get. So let me, I'm going to stop sharing this and I'm going to go over to the incremental spending. Unless people want me to stay here and you want to ask some questions, or should I? I could go to the incremental spending and then we could toggle back and forth because they're both related. All the incremental spending is presumably baked into this. To the best of my knowledge, as of November 3rd, which is what, 30 days or 33 days after we really started going to school? So I need to caution everybody that this is just the best of my ability right now, what I, what I see. And you know by the end of the year that these numbers are absolutely going to change.
Why don't we do the incremental spending and then come back?
Okay. Let's see. Share the screen. Share. All right, are we looking at school reopening costs, the incremental spending? Good, all right. So you've seen this before, I think, or a number of you've seen it before, that we've talked about it at a couple of meetings. So as we go up above here, we're looking at the lost revenue, so we don't have a full-day K program right now. You know, the, and, but, so I'm projecting a complete year's loss if we get lucky, if there's an ability to get a full-day program. And then, you know, we probably prorate from there on in, but as of right now, it's all reflective as a full loss. The Kids in Action has always been offsetting for the past several years, probably about five years, we have been able to take Kids in Action revenues and use those as an offset to the, to the operating budget. Those would really be for the expenses, like, so they rent our space, so they're actually using our space. We actually provide transportation to them, we actually produce their payroll and all their books. So these aren't extraordinary expenses to be given, but, you know, if they were a, an after-school-based program that was independent, they would have these types of expenditures. So alls we're doing in the operating budget by these offsets is saying, hey, we provide you with maintenance, we provide you with services, we provide you with transportation. If you were going to have be a competitive after-care, after-school provider, you would have those types of expenses. And these are still very, very low compared to what I'm sure others would pay. But, so we use that to offset against some of the expenditures in our business, such as, you know, the business office. And there's, you know, some $90,000 in maintenance for custodial services and the like. They've also always paid their health insurance, although that's not included in this $170,000. So, so the fact that Kids in Action isn't really running a full program, you know, we've lost those revenues and fortunately, we've been able to place most of the, just about all of the teachers and employees in other roles such as bus monitors and Paris, et cetera. So the organization is largely still intact, which is excellent because as soon as we can get it back in service, you know, we could do it a lot quicker than if we didn't have it in service right now, so. And then middle school activity fees, I'm not sure what types of activities, if any, are going on to middle school, but we're not going to collect these fees to offset it, I wouldn't think. So, you know, that's $60,000 usually what we would be making for those fees. And those would really go to pay for the instructors, the activity or the advisors for the activity, and then also some for sort of late bus runs herself. So we're not going to get that. As we went along, as we started building this over the summer, a lot of these items I've placed on this sheet because at one point there were considerations and I wanted to figure out what the, what the impact would be. You know, we don't have Paris looking at the medical, at the isolation room, so that was zeroed out. You know, we haven't gone with the port where we have needed 25 or 26 FTEs because we just couldn't find the space, the kids just wouldn't fit, no matter what we tried to do. But this one here is a new one, incremental Paris support, so, you know, that would be for the remote services. As the, you know, if we had, we're planning to have six remote teachers and then we'd need some Paris to cover the extra volumes and stuff. So those are sort of projected in here. And then, as we go over to the right, what I'm trying to determine is, and these would be, of course, you know, they're subject to the date that we get these people. Up above here, I'm just sort of looking at this, I'm doing, is it covered? You know, would this be COVID reimbursable? You know, would it likely be incurred before 12:30? Okay, you know, and if it would, that's, then maybe it could be reimbursable, and if it isn't, it couldn't. So I needed to separate some of the payroll things. So that's what these two columns over here do, sort of like, I put an estimate out, I think this is reimbursable to some extent and this is not. This is the budget for the cleaners that we would have. And, you know, about this, the, to break that up, if we continue this cleaning for the rest of the year, a good portion of the cleaning won't be reimbursable. But 88,000 would be. These are for jobs that we did. So you see some of the capital savings, some of the capital savings are savings because we built up that maintenance account. We sort of separated the accounting for a purpose so that we could in fact hold these into a separate account and have, you know, better records for submitting for reimbursements. But like, you know, for duct cleanings, for example, we had in the, in the maintenance, in the capital, duct cleanings. Fortunately, we had it there and we did it, but that would be submitted for a COVID reimbursement as well. Technology continues to grow, you saw the big technology, you know, 11, $1.1 million on the, on the forecast. The, this was a projection for the increased transportation cost of $167,000. And that would be for the regular ed buses where they were going to like have to, almost instead of having a six-hour day, we're doing the multiple-tier routes and up with the eight hours, eight hours a day. We bought a couple of new vans so we could handle some more special ed. You know, in light of the fact that you can't handle the volumes and the vehicles, this gave us at least two more vehicles so that we can use those for, you know, myriad of purposes to handle some longer routes that we would have had to gone to contractors for. And then, you know, this is the, the cost in here, the cost of the lease as well as the gas for the couple of vehicles that I would project. Bus monitors. So there, you know, that's for the monitors to be on the bus and to look after the kids. Projecting that out for the number of school days, 368,000. The, those additional five buses to the tune of $50,000 space rent, I'm projecting out 150. So a lot of these are projections, I don't know what these numbers are, but I have money in there for them. The custodial maintenance, so this would be a lot having to do with the rent. So in your packet, you have these little keys over here of what I think it's for. So you may, if you see it above, you know, this is like, you know, part of the rental thing, or how do I get the building ready? You know, these would be for transportation here, this is for maintenance, of course, technology. This is for personnel type things, so those, that's what the codes over there mean. So they're sort of grouped, so if you see them duplicate, you know, it's more like in that category. And so Paula talked about a number of things, we have custodial maintenance, it's a projection. Maintenance, we'll have to do, you know, plow repairs, they're going to plow, but we would have to reimburse them for that. And, you know, some nine-month repairs, of course, we would, would be our responsibility. This was a nurse that, I'm projecting this to be on a contract basis, right? We would get, we have contracts with two nursing firms, so I think that, you know, we should be able to place a nurse for, you know, X number of hours a day at this building instead of having to hire somebody. And then, you know, administrative assistant, the same thing, I'm pricing that out as a contract rate, so. And this was the insurance, they, they provided some information on the cost of these things. So that's more real than some of the others. But the others are really, right now, still up in the air, not certain, but estimates that I believe are in the ballpark. So when all that comes down, there's a total of about $4.9 million of extra spending. The, you know, and not reimbursable for sure is the revenue, so we know the revenues aren't reimbursable. So, you know, we, the net incremental revenue losses here, you know, 3.7. And then we've had a couple of filings, we've had a filing, 828. These dates, by the way, keep in mind, these dates are the dates we provided them to the town. They may not have been submitted on that date, but this is the date we said, hey, here's a submission to the town. And, you know, and then, of course, they're very busy too, so they got around, they'll get it that, you know, a few days later or so. So cumulative, right now, we have 1388, 884. The information that we got back is, this one's almost pretty good. There might be like $18 removed from that. Or, you know, maybe, maybe a little more than $18, but ultimately we did pretty good. We haven't heard much back on this one yet. So, you know, so if you look at this 1388, that's what the reimbursement says of November 3rd. So then, if my forecast has all of this sort of baked into it, and we're going to get 1388 back, that's where I come to that $300, $300,000. You know, when I think about, I really don't know, I think that the forecast numbers, I think that they will pick up over time. I think that it's probably going to accelerate a little bit, so. You know, I think that we just said, we have to take it sort of day by day, month by month and keep an eye on it. You know, if something were to pop up that I'm... And, well, let me stop sharing, any questions on this? So why don't, so what I'd be concerned about really on the forecast is just the ability of...
John, if I could just interject really quick, if you don't mind? Yeah, first of all, just thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I think that you, you know, you've done a great job of being transparent to the public here of what we, just how fluid this situation is, how complex it is. And yet, you know, trying to make this a balanced budget, you're doing a phenomenal job, so it's much appreciated. I think it goes without saying that I, and I want to reiterate to everyone, the situation is changing on a daily basis, and so we have to be very cautious about the future. The forecast that you provided, John, as I know, is a lot earlier than usual that you would ever do this, but it just goes to show the kind of work that you're doing right now to ensure that we keep moving forward in a very positive way. So thanks for all you're doing, I just want to say that before we, I know you want to turn that over to the, are you going to stop sharing or are you going to keep that up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one other thing, just on, just on the forecast, so I just wanted to all know. So on the forecast, of course, in a school budget, I mean, aside from in a normal year, I mean, this COVID spending is incredible because it's not just people, right? I mean, largely our budget is 83, 83% people. But, you know, this year we have all these other expenditures. But in the forecast, and especially with this short period of time, there's a number of groups like teachers and administrators, those that have like really salaries set out, it, they're easier to project simply because they're all encumbered and we can see what is the spend going to be for them between now and the end of the year. But all the other groups, like many, well, custodians are like that too for the most part, but any hourly groups, the best I could do in this was try to, they're not, but they're not budgeted, so I had to like, you know, take 30 some-odd days or 35 some-odd days of run rate and, you know, say, what is this per day? And then try to project them out to the day, to the number remaining days in the school year. So that's one thing that concerns me a lot because I just didn't have that, I don't have that visibility, I don't know. I can't even begin to guess, and alls I can do is hope that I have a run rate that is reflective, a run rate that I broke down to a daily rate that will be somewhat reflective of the run rate we will experience for the next 140 or 50 days of school, you know? So that's a big wildcard because those numbers can add up very, very quickly. So I just wanted to kind of like put that one out there so you know that the forecast is, it's the salary teachers and stuff, those are good numbers. All the other groups for the most part are hourly's and they're just projected based on run rate. I get very uncomfortable with run rate, I don't, I don't really like it, so. I will stop sharing this and then we can talk, I'm happy to answer questions and I can always, you know, put them back up on the screen.
Great, and thank you for all your work on that, John. Does anyone on the school committee have any questions about this? Liza?
So John, on the, thank you very much for the forecast, that is the earliest we've ever seen it. Keep our fingers crossed, it looks good for now. On the estimated extra COVID-related spending. So we had said with the town that we would itemize COVID expenses that would be reimbursed and then COVID expenses that, the additional COVID expenses that were non-reimbursable. So I'm trying to understand how these add up. So you say the total estimated COVID-related incremental impacts are 4,923,152. And then you've got a million 210, that's revenue we're not receiving. And then we have anticipated reimbursables of... Oh, wait a minute. Okay, so the reimbursables is 1.388,84.
That's our submission right now, Liza, so we've submitted those reimbursables already.
All right.
So if you look at that incremental... So if you look at that incremental cost, let me, I can throw this up, the, let me throw this up again. Okay, so. Okay, so.
I'm trying to get all the numbers to add up and then.
This one here, this, this three, seven, one, three. So this is the total impacts. So, you know, I, it's not all costs, right? Total impacts that I feel, you know, the revenue loss plus the extra expenditure.
Right.
This is the revenues that I'm saying, okay, well, you know, those aren't really gonna be recoverable for, through any reimbursables.
Yep.
This would be the, the incremental cost net of the revenue losses. So this is, this is the pool that I envision is sort of like, this is the reimbursable uni, possible universe for me right now.
Yep.
Okay? And then this is coming from this column over here that basically says this happens after twelve thirty.
Yep.
And, and if all these expenditures stay the way that I forecast them, I would project them. And if nothing gets extended on KIRs, I will not be able to ever recover this money from, from KIRs Act.
Okay.
Okay. And so this one here is like, this is the, so I.
All right.
You know, this could number could go up, right? But this is the possible estimated reimbursements that my mind can think of right now. So while I've filed for thirteen eighty eight, right? I, I could probably file for up to twenty three thirty nine. And I think that we'll have a payroll filing that we're gonna try to get, you know, get, we're starting to work on that now. And then we get to file after June, December thirtieth, even though, you know, it'll be that we can take any expenditures prior to then. So I'm thinking that when we totally file, we're gonna get up to somewhere close to this number.
All right.
So if you took that number, Liza, the, the seven, the two, three, three, nine, and you put that to the bottom line of the forecast, now it sort of looks like I've covered that three hundred.
Right.
Have some, I have a little extra to cover the uncertainty that I have.
Yep.
I'm sure I'm wrong. And I, I, I would love to say I'm right, but I'm sure I'm wrong.
It's just, it's swirling. I really know. So.
Everything is so, yeah, the numbers are just too big. They're just fast and furious. And, you know, I mean, we're gonna pick up pace and some, I, I don't know, something's gonna happen. But, so if you looked at it though, right, if you put that extra, what are we, four? That's almost another million dollars, right? It's like nine hundred fifty thousand. So now you'd say, hey, I got a positive variance of six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Not true. I do not. I will not. I'm certain I will not.
Yep. But I think it's good to, and we'll just keep track of even the post-December thirtieth because.
Oh, yeah.
Depending on the president-elect's Biden Harris administration, we don't, you know, we'll see what happens with them with budgets and planning. So. Okay, now I understand it better. Thank you. But I, I think it's good that we've tracked it all as we committed to track.
And we'll continue to. I mean, this is, this is big, this is big stuff. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful.
We, and none of us know about it. So we're just learning about it as we go along. So.
Yep. Everyone's reinventing how they do things, right? Does anyone else on the committee have questions for John?
I do.
Libby?
Yeah, so I have a couple. And the first one has to do specifically with one number regarding remote teachers pro rate. I can't see some, you're seeing what line item that is.
Okay, let me share that again. So the.
I can see it.
Yep. I just want to point to everybody so everybody can see what we're talking about. So you were, are we back on the reopening cost, right?
Right.
So you were looking at this remote teachers.
Remote teachers pro rate, yep.
Right.
Times seventy five thousand is four hundred and fifty thousand?
Right. We're not, there, there's a proration in here because we don't have them from the, for the whole year. So there's a, they're prorated by days. I don't know what's, what I've got in here. Yeah, I got that in for a hundred and twenty two days.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Because that's a big number, Libby. So certainly I want to, you know, I try to, I try to take it to days when I can get them to days. And that's assuming, okay, I'm assuming we're gonna get them hired now, right?
Right. So that's my question is, do we, how many people do we still actually need to hire? Or like how many, what's our number of personnel that we're down on? I mean, we're understaffed with teachers and parrot educators at this point?
I, I, I don't know for understaffed teachers. I think we have the teachers, unless there's leaves of absence that we're trying to replace or, you know, we don't have these remote teachers all on board yet, that's for sure. You know, and, but, and I know that we, we are struggling with Paris, you know, to get them filled and to keep them. So, I mean, there's still, there's still is some ins and outs going on there. I think, I think maybe cleaners and bus monitors will be able to, you know, alleviate some of that for the next several weeks. If some of the college kids might come home and might need some more. But, you know, that, that will be short-lived and probably end again in January.
Okay. All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else on the committee? Carlos?
John, do you have an idea more or less how, how much payroll, you know, in payroll we have so far that we could you know, seek reimbursement for?
No, I don't, I don't have the, so there's a numerous groups, Carlos, right? So we're gonna have, we got the, the cleaners and the bus monitors. And we have, you know, we have all the overtime custodians may have put in over the summertime, plus the summer workers. You know, we have lists of all these people, right? So we're trying to contact Plymouth County. We've sent them an email because we want to know, do you need this on a daily basis? Or would you prefer to have it on a weekly basis with a payroll number? So we have lists and lists of people. And I, and I haven't, I mean, when I say we, it's like the, the people that work for me, they have it. I haven't said to them, hey, what does it all add up to? Okay. Because they have to do their work too. So I ha, I haven't even bothered trying to get that number yet. But there's, you know, you got the cleaners, you got the bus drivers, you get the extra hours. You're gonna have the, all the custodian overtime, you know, with the be, you know, those weekends when we're setting up, we had bus drivers helping out, helping us to get the, the rooms laid out. You know, we, we, we want to submit for FF C R A, you know, payments because those are really coming, you know, out of our pocket. We don't know what we're gonna get. There's food service. I mean, we, even when we think of a food service, while they're sort of an operation, they're not serving the same way they used to serve. I mean, now we have to like take online orders. Someone's gotta be doing that. And now everything, instead of being served off a tray, has got to be put into a box. So, I mean, there's a lot of extra, you know, COVID-related labor that's going on. So we have the, we have the list of the people and we're trying to just get in, in the days, actually. And we're trying to get from Plymouth County, you know, do you need it by the week? Because the, you have to prove it. You have to show everything. You have to show, here's the date, here's the person, here's the pay period. And I think here's the check number that they got paid on. So we're hoping that it's at least weekly.
Now, you're, you're not billing them directly. You're billing through the town, correct?
Well, we, we will provide a submission in the form that they need and we'll give it to Sue in the town. And then Sue will, will apply for it for us. But so we gotta give her real good records. I mean, it's, this is, this is a, you know, gonna be a very, very big spreadsheet. I don't know how many lines it will be. You know, if you, if you saw some of the other submissions Karen did, she had them broken down into like the, you know, four or five categories. So there were multiple lines, but, you know, that's gonna be fairly simple compared to the payroll. And if we gotta get to it daily, it's gonna be even more lines, you know?
No, thank you for that, John. And I see that, that two point three million dollars, right? We actually have out together through all the phases, including phase five. It's going to be three point six million dollars. My understanding is that perhaps the town may allow us to reimburse, get reimbursed for the school expenditures?
The, so the three point, well, if the town's eligible for three point six million dollars.
This is the whole town, yes.
Yeah. What this, what this analysis says right now is I don't, I don't see me being able to get there. I'm not gonna be able to get there. I mean, in, in my vision that I have right now, with all things being equal, I see myself getting up to about two point four million dollars of COVID reimbursable expenditures. Unless they extend it, then maybe I can tuck that other one point three in and I could get close to the three point six. But the way they have it right now, as of twelve thirty, you know, the expenditure has, because all of that one point three, those are expenditures and, and payroll items and stuff like that that will happen after twelve thirty. So unless Plymouth County changes that and extends that, I see myself the, you know, and this is, this is just to interpret, right? I don't know where this number's gonna go, but I see the max I'm gonna get is two point four.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I can see right now. But if they extend, I think I could get up to three point seven, but it'll be capped at three point six.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carlos and John. Does anyone in the public have any questions about this?
Probably put them all to sleep.
Not on purpose.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So thank you again for all that work, putting that together. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Sorry, Carrie.
Sorry, yeah.
Sorry, it's Michelle. Sorry. I was just thinking if people, I think this CARES Act and some of this funding that's coming from the state and the Fed or lack thereof is, is worth noting. And I think that is something I know folks are always asking what they can do. So I think pay attention to that, to those legislations that are going through and call and write to your congressman and your state senators and your state representatives to ask them to help fund, you know, more funds into the CARES Act and whatnot, because schools and municipalities need this money just as much as businesses do. So just a little thought there to reach out to your elected representatives.
That's a very good point. All right, seven point three to consider the homeschool applications for students AL, grade three and AL grade five for fiscal year twenty twenty one and act as appropriate. Dr. Austin?
Yes, thank goodness. John, I did not go to sleep. Thank you very much. You did a good job. Thank you. Yeah, a, as always, you know, we have, as we've seen this year, a couple more under the homeschool application. We have reviewed that. It needs to standard by, just you, or I make a recommendation that you approve.
Okay, I will take a motion then to accept the homeschool applications for AL grade three and AL grade five.
I'll make a motion that we approve the homeschool applications for students AL grade three, AL grade five for fiscal year twenty twenty one as, as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, Libby. And roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you. Seven point four is to receive notification of the appointment of Lauren Quinio, speech, speech, language pathologist at Hingham High School effective November ninth, twenty twenty, and Alicia Barry, para educator at South Elementary effective November second, twenty twenty. So welcome to you both. Seven point five is to receive notification of the advancement on the salary scale for a teacher. Seven point six is to receive notification of the resignations of a math tutor at Foster and a number of para educators. So would just like to thank all of them for your service to the schools. Number eight is subcommittee and project reports. So again, we'll go alphabetically, Michelle.
Thanks. One, one thing maybe I would just note, Carrie, on the resignations of some of the powers, because I don't want people to be overly concerned. Some of these are quite dated from earlier in the, over the summer. So it wasn't that, it was just a slew of that. Because I know it's been tough to find those positions. Thank you. Subcommittee and project reports. I have a few things. CPAC, we had a, there was a meeting last night where the Dr. Libilawa came and talked to a group of CPAC parents about the Equity Task Force work. So that was a great discussion and how that equity work will encompass our students with special education needs and accommodations. So more to come on that, but it was a great conversation. It's a relatively small group of parents. So I would just urge people to attend those meetings if you can. And again, as Dr. Libilawa had pointed out, you don't have to necessarily go to your group's meeting. You can attend different ones, but it is great to get the perspectives from the different stakeholders. So thanks to the CPAC group for putting that together on relatively short notice. And there's a CPAC meeting coming up. I think it's next Tuesday. I'm just waiting to get confirmation on that. The, I have a couple of Metco updates for everybody. And I hope you will bear with me because I gotta have a few. We hosted another Metco coffee with the superintendent with Metco parents and Dr. Austin on November fifth. And that was well attended by the Boston parents. We shared some ideas about different ways that we can continue staying engaged with our Boston parents and families. So that was great information. And we're going to, Dr. Austin generously offered to continue doing those monthly. And they're great. They are a great opportunity to meet with folks in the, in Hingham and in Boston. So thanks, Dr. Austin, for hosting another one of those and making that a monthly priority. Also, coming up on November thirtieth at seven thirty, there is a Metco, well, a round table for discussion that is going to happen for Metco parents and parents in, of students of color. And that is being organized by Dr., I mean, sorry, by our Metco director, Carols Perez. It will be attended by Dr. Austin and Dr. Libilawa. I'll be attending as well, I think Ness as well, as the Metco liaisons. And it's a chance for parents of Metco students and other student, parents of students of color who can come together and just share perspectives and give some insight into their experiences in the Hingham Public Schools and should, should be a good event. So folks are invited, parents of Metco students and former, current, and students of color are welcome and invited to attend. That was also, that's being put together, again, Carols Perez, I think it was Carol's idea. And she put it together with some members of the Hingham Unity Council. So we thank the Hingham Unity Council for keeping that going and making sure that got on people's calendars.
Is that seven o'clock?
It is at seven thirty, I believe, on the thirtieth. And then Dr. Libilawa and I have been attending these, actually, four weekly meetings on Thursdays with the Metco director and other superintendent, school committee members, assistant superintendents about to plan for a leadership retreat in December where providing education using an anti-racism lens will be talked about and discussed and best practices brought up. And it's shaping up to be a really great conference for the leadership. We're learning a lot about where other districts are in their anti-racism work, where we stand. And just getting a lot of information out there. So the, the program is coming up in a couple of weeks. And it should be a really great opportunity for leadership to get together. I think the, the big takeaway is what we're trying to determine at this leadership conference is what does it mean to be a Metco district, right? It doesn't just mean you accept students from Boston into your schools. So really, what does it mean? And we want to try to start doing things like highlighting that we are Metro, Metco district. I think I've said it before that it is a privilege to host a Metco program. And I think we need to highlight that more, that that is something that we host in the district and that we are incredibly proud of. And that we want to continue being a, a school district that provides that program. So I think there's a lot about it too. You know, we have to figure out how we're gonna, how we can educate the community, both here and in Boston, about our, the Met, the history of Metco. We have to work on diversifying our hiring practices, diversifying the curriculum, putting into practice restorative justice, which I think that's something that the high school council, school council is going to take up. So I think it's just that we just have to think, like, every time we're making decisions, we have to think about Metco and the impact that it has on the Metco. and the impact that it has on the Metco program and the students, whether it's discipline, financial, um, social, emotional. So just to always keep the Metco program sort of at the top of our minds while working on it. So more to come on that.
Thank you, Michelle. Jen, do you have anything?
Uh, yes. Um, I attended the Foster School Council meeting on November. They are currently in their second year of their school proven plan. And Dr. Wilcox updated the group and discussed how Foster, they're starting a fifth grade student council. And at that time, they were collecting applications. Um, they also started a kindness, kindness club. That got in collaboration with the high school kindness club. And the next school council meeting is on January 6th that I will attend. And on this Thursday, as Dr. LeBilawa mentioned, the, uh, the PTO is having their PTO meeting on Thursday night at 7:00 PM. And Dr. LeBilawa will be giving his Equity and Inclusion Task Force presentation to the foster community during that meeting. And that's.
Great. Thank you, Jen. Um, Ness?
Um, yeah, so I was, um, I didn't get to my unmute fast enough when Dr. Jamie was presenting his equity presentation. So thank you, Jamie. Um, I have to say, I've really enjoyed the sessions that you are putting on. They're really informative. The discussions are rich and thoughtful. Um, and I think people are understanding more about what, what the district is trying to do when they attend this. And, and I have to say, I think we're so fortunate to have Dr. Jamie because his experience, um, and background are just, they, they go hand in hand with the work that we're doing. Uh, so as he mentioned, we went to three different PTOs. We did the high school, we did South and PRS. We also had a CPAC meeting. Uh, so the other schools will be coming forward, um, in the coming weeks. And as Michelle mentioned, there will be a session for Metco, um, where we'll have an opportunity to discuss that then. And, um, what else? Finance. There are two warrants included in your packet, um, under finance, and that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Ness. Carlos?
I attended the PIS, uh, School Council, uh, on the 9th. Uh, they are still working on the, uh, improvement plan for next year. I also attended, uh, the Veterans Day, uh, celebration on Friday. And it was awesome to be in a room with 253 participants, uh, amongst them, most students. Uh, and they presented, uh, you know, how about veterans bringing in pictures of relatives and reciting poems? It was really awesome to be there. I also attended the SNAP, uh, meeting, uh, last week. Uh, they just finished, uh, running, uh, the soccer program for kids with special needs. You know, Fred Hossi does a beautiful job with that. So congratulations to everyone involved with SNAP. Uh, and, uh, that's pretty much it. Next meeting of Capro and Facilities is on, um, December 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. And I would just add for, I was at the SNAP meeting as well. There's also flag football and yoga zumba and, um, hockey that went this fall. And there, all those programs are wrapping up. So it's been nice for the kids to be able to do that. Okay, Libby?
Okay, um, so the first South School Council meeting will be this Wednesday. And, um, I need to reach out to the community outreach committee members to plan our next meeting. And, um, I just want to let everybody know to keep an eye out for more coffees to come, um, most likely in February and in April. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Liza?
Um, there was no, um, middle school school council this, um, month, but the, um, master plan committee, we met last week. And we're meeting again tomorrow night. So I will come to the Board of Selectmen meeting. And I may drop off early because the master plan meeting is at the exact same time. Um, and then we're, we're also meeting December 9th. We are still in the process of finalizing the goals and recommendations. Building up to on December 16th, there's a public meeting to present the draft of where we are. And so every time we get close to finalizing it, somebody thinks of something else we shouldn't be talking about. Um, it's going to be a very, very thorough report. So, um, hopefully we'll make it for the December 16th deadline. So that's ongoing work.
Okay, thank you, Liza. And regarding the meeting tomorrow night with the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, we're on the agenda for 8:00 PM. So if that makes a difference with anyone's schedule, that's, that's when we're, then I'll probably, I'll go to the master plan meeting at 7:00 and jump on. So thank you.
Carrie, I have one more thing. I forgot to report back on, uh, on the Massachusetts Association of School Communities Conference that happened on Saturday. Thank you all for, uh, allowing me to represent you as your delegate. How, um, out of the 10 resolutions, only one was not, uh, taken any action on, which was number 10. That dealt with, uh, let me, student monitoring, just one second. Yeah, uh, resolution number 10 relative to the monitoring of, uh, of attendance of students during the pandemic. That one was tabled. Um, and the only one that really generated a lot of more discussion, although it passed, was the one, um, allowing for 16, uh, years, uh, 16-year-old to vote at the municipal level. It passed and it was clarified that, uh, you know, should that become law, uh, would be an option for the municipalities to whether to adopt or not. So thank you so much. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Michelle, do you have something?
I do, and I'm so sorry. I can't believe I forgot this. Um, and thank you, Ray Hestes, for reminding me. We had some, um, very exciting news about Foster School as we move ahead with the MSBA. The design enrollment, um, has been completed and the design enrollment for Foster is to be 605 students. So that is really great news. Yeah.
That's great.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And thank you to the building committee too, for all their work on this. So I have policy. Uh, we met to finish up section I, which is instruction, and section D, which is fiscal management. We will send these sections to the appropriate school staff for their input and then, um, the, and then it'll come to the committee. Our next meeting will be on December 2nd to work on section G, which is personnel. Uh, and then I just wanted to mention that Dr. Austin and I will be attending the Hingham Middle School PTO meeting this Thursday at 7, the 19th at 7:00 PM. Just to, it's an informal Q and A with parents to talk about their concerns and questions at the middle school level. So we'll be doing that. So with that, um, does anyone have anything under 48 hours? Any items not, may not reasonably known within 48 hours in advance of the meeting?
I have one, Carrie, if it's okay.
Okay, sure.
Uh, just, just a, a brief announcement and a, and a thank you. Because our next meeting is not until in December, um, as we go through the holidays. But, um, my administrative assistant, Julie O'Halloran, uh, will be retiring, um, and, and going off to the sunset. And, uh, I wish her the very best. I want to thank her. I know she's on the call and she probably won't show herself. But I want to tell her how much I appreciate the work that she's done, uh, for me and for the school committee. Uh, and, uh, you stepped in at a hard time as COVID was, uh, just kind of taking over. So Julie, thank you very much. And on behalf of, uh, everyone in central office, and I'm sure the school committee, just thank you for all that you've done. Um, and so thank you.
Yeah.
And, and I would also say we have a, um, our, our person that we've hired, Marianne Gates, will be starting, uh, tomorrow uh, and shadowing with, uh, with Julie and, uh, learning the job over the next couple of weeks. I don't anticipate how Julie will be for the next meeting, but it will be Marianne.
Thank you. And I, I would just echo that. Thank you, Julie, for all of your work at this. You, you had stepped into this role in an extremely challenging time, times for a lot of levels, and you've been amazing to work with. So we appreciate everything you've done for, for the school committee and for the district. And we look forward to, uh, meeting Marianne going forward. So with that, um, I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held on November 2nd, 2020, and discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations with HGA Unit A and B, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So, and with that, we will be adjourned at 9:00. Let's just take five minutes and then we'll jump on executive session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for everyone who joined us tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.